All right. We're on the air or we're on recording anyway, we're not on the air live, but um it's our June study session and we're starting off with the meeting with an update from the folks at New Seasons. Joe McCarthy and Katie Shan and Derek Gates.
Thank you so much for having us. I wanted to just share a couple of numbers that we'll explore as we go on. The first is one hundred and forty-three thousand, which is something that you did, that Milwaukee did. The next is sixty-three hundred. That's something that I'm proud that we did. The next is twenty-four, which is a thing that we hope to do or exceed. So we'll we'll unpack those a little bit as we go, but I am Joe McCarthy. Thank you so much for having me. I'm the store manager at New Seasons Market. Derek Gates, I'm the assistant store manager.
And Katie Shan, I work in the communications department.
Super excited here. It has been so much fun to put the store in this community and just every opportunity we can get to share that fun and that gratitude would take. Excited and a little bit nervous to.
He said he wanted it at first, but I was like, I I can happily drive.
We have been in a neighborhood market since day one. We were founded in two thousand by three families. Our first store was in Rowley Hills. We took over Kinos that had gone out of business. We made one of the great decisions of our company's history by spending an extra dollar to get their banana cake recipe. Served us very well. We haven't helped with any cake ever. Do yourself a favor. We became the world's first certified B Corp grocer. We have a commitment to sustainable practices to local producers in the community and we'll we'll talk about all of those as we go on a little bit. It is one of one of our founders, I think, said it best when they they said that we could be a purchasing agent for our customers rather than a sales agent for our vendors. And I truly believe that that is what we do. That's why whenever someone asks us, says, I think, yourself, you should have this. We pay attention to that, look for a pattern. We try to bring in those things that fill up the basket. So we did open, we had a, we had a soft open that wasn't so soft on March twenty seventh. It did. We were, we were a little bit nervous in the morning. By the afternoon, we were we did a grand opening on March twenty seventh. We've gone up from a hundred and ten staff. Now we're at a hundred and twenty-eight, so we've got a hundred and twenty-eight folks, many of whom are, you know, walking to work, taking a quick bus ride, just really close to Milwaukee marketplace. We've got one staff member who was at the Albertson's with the Albertson's that dated us, so she came, she came with the place. We have a really strong partnership with Esther's Pantry and the Blackness Service Center. Really important to say that the folks in Milwaukee City Council were also instrumental in helping us get into Milwaukee marketplace. I know that as soon as I pressed my face against the glass about ten months ago and looked inside the building, I was really hooked up to get in there. So thank you very much to the city of Milwaukee for helping us and facilitating this. Product selection is probably one of the the things that we focus on the most and I think that makes a difference. We try to be best in class in our produce department. We are really committed to some partnerships in our meat see-through department. Our prepared foods and our bakery department are also outstanding. It's tough for me to not just name every single department as we go along, but our olive bar, our specialty cheese, our beer line, our floral gifts that you can get at our own goods. We try to make sure that we've got interesting and unique things and most qualities. We also want to provide a spectrum of choices. So we call it our eat and let eat philosophy. We've got everything from Coca-Cola to the latest mushroom-based kombuchas. Everything that you can imagine and we really, people will often say to us on the aisle, I think you guys are so healthy. No, sometimes we sometimes we just want spicy hot churros, something like that, just like you, you know, like you can buy ninety percent of all the good stuff, but you gotta have animal crackers for the kids.
One of our sustainable practices is that we like to show up for the plant. There's a few ways that we do this at New Seasons. One of those is through waste production. That includes reducing and diverting our waste and creating more opportunities for recycling. Milwaukee customers can bring recyclables that we can drop in the curbside bins, like tea, tea plastics, like stretchy film, red bags and all those pack tech plastic six-pack holders that you find on craft beer or six-packs, all of which can be dropped at Milwaukee for us to recycle.
Produce that in the store.
It's a little bit hidden. So if you walk in Starbucks side entrance and head to the left, there's a very dark room that illuminates if you step through the door and the recycling center in there. Update our wayfinding signage a little bit, I guess that. We're also focused on climate action, including reducing our operational emissions, including those along our supply chain and making climate-friendly improvements. We partner with Beeline, who helps to warehouse and small vendors for us and then make deliveries to some of our inner Portland stores utilizing that really cool electric cargo bike, which both reduces emissions and has an impact on traffic and catchings as well. And soil is everything. We promote regenerative agriculture, which rebuilds soil health, increases carbon capture and improves water efficiency and promotes biodiversity. We have partnered and supported Carmen Ranch in helping them, urging them to move forward with regenerative agricultural practices. We also frequently feature and highlight brands that use regenerative practices in their agricultural sourcing of their items.
Interpretive dance.
Ways this shows up in numbers, we focus on sixty-six percent diverting all of our operational waste away from landfills through reduction, reuse, recycling and composting efforts. We have a really robust training program for helping staff and customers to understand where items should go, so they hit the appropriate waste streams. We work to get our total waste down to four point five nine percent. To reduce our food and product waste, we're continually refining practices, learning about and implementing new technology and reevaluating our operations. I think a really cool thing that we do at New Seasons that sets us apart from other grocery retailers in our space is our Blue Slip program, which basically takes up food that would otherwise be wasted, composted and that serves the benefit for our staff, like basically elect taste something for free in addition to those items going to our cleaning partners. So it's a really cool program. It's very unique to New Seasons. We've also achieved a twenty-one percent energy star certification. That's twenty-one percent of our locations have achieved this and Milwaukee is aspirational to achieve that unless we're able to do so.
And what, what would you have to do to do so?
My understanding is that it's a timeline thing. In terms of like collecting data over the course of time, proving that we are energy efficient. I mean, the building is built with all the bells and whistles, LED lights, things that turn off when folks aren't actively in front of them, very efficient systems, you know. My understanding is that it's like a timing thing, so at least you're running that.
I believe our most recent, so we opened Palisades in twenty twenty-one. Yeah. The most recent stores are Palisades and the guest video on Main Street and downtown Vancouver in Milwaukee. And I think at least the last two have received EPA certification, so I imagine that wants this system.
I keep a very careful log of the time I turn off all my We also are privileged to to be a part of the communities that we are in. It is our goal to be the ultimate neighborhood grocery store and in order to do that, we want to make sure that we are giving back. It's something that from top to bottom in our organization is important. Our staff members sometimes join us because of the relationships we have in the community. And I know that as someone lucky enough to be a leader in the building, I'm able to see firsthand the partnerships that we form. Sometimes that takes the form of community donations, so we do give ten percent of after-tax profits back to the communities that we serve. We focus on hunger, education and environmental stewardship with about ninety percent of our giving going toward hunger because we are a food business. Makes sense to us. That's where we feel that we can affect the most change. We have our our Bag It Forward program, so if you bring in your own bag, you get a credit or we we donate five cents to an ever-changing host of local nonprofits. We have a cans, cans for kids program at our store. We give out blue bags with a QR code on them so that you can collect your cans, take them back to the bottle drop and then they'll go to our donation. We also have a few focused community hunger drives. We do in November, donate dinner. Working meals on meals and in May, your wish, my neighbors going, ask our customers to make a donation. Really great engagement that's with us there.
And we'll say with Nerishar neighbors, that is also a match for, will match up to a certain amount for our customers' donation and then, but also every day you were at, you're buying whatever your groceries, you're like, hey, I'd like to give five dollars to one of your community partners, you can get right back to the community as well.
So for community fundraising, it's about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that's raised through the engagement programs. That is with a focus on food security, environmental action, neighborhood education. Four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for food equity and access. And eight hundred and forty-nine hours of community service. We offer each of our staff members the opportunity to go work with a nonprofit and we will pay them for eight hours. This can be everything from serving meals, picking up trash, volunteering at schools, building or maintaining trails where our staff ever wishes washing dogs. And then the opportunity to wash a dog. Just give me your five one one three dollar. Local sourcing is one of the, one of the special sauces that we've got at New Seasons. We do everything we can to bring in things locally, support the local economy and farmers, which helps the regional economy, promotes job creation and supports the livelihoods of local farming families. Today, a little bit later on, we'll have an example of this from Peter Farbs. We've got some sweet sub-rised berries, which they're actually better in the hoods this year. So we brought some of those today. Try those out. Those are, if you take those strawberries any more than about thirty miles, they turn into jam. So there's not a market, the only kind of other market for it other than very hyperlocal, because they can be frozen and sent to Japan where they make specialty ice cream out of them. So it's either part of the budget, it's just New Seasons Market or Japan. So we're just The the other one that I would bring up right now that's really still going strong is the Yakima Nation Asparagus. This guy has an incredible story. Formerly at Nava Farms, it's now a veteran patron to Yakima Nation and the story is just a roller coaster. Asparagus is really incredible.
I can follow up and send you the story. It's beautiful story.
I never do it justice. I try to do it like I'm in a computer pitch. I just want to keep that balance. We also really focus on local finds. We're an avenue for very small producers to come into and get to shelf. We help with finding co-packers. We help with getting UPC's recipe development. And let's say, example of this is Milwaukee's very obvious, which is now on the shelf. Next door, it's two doors down. Remember I see they're excited, I'm excited. Our partner brand is another thing that I could go on about for quite a while. If we invest in the community, a portion of the proceeds are, will now be given out as grants. Local sourcing, eighty percent of our products are from within five hundred miles of our stores. We have innovated packaging to reduce waste. Our fresh pasta is the first the first iteration of a very low plastic packaging, so you can tear off the top of it and recycle the bottom of it. That's not something that you can do with many other containers. We're committed to sustainable with more organic and regeneratively produced options. We also put our actual partners right on the label, highly natural or private label to do that, some types of These are, those are secrets that people will carry to their graves about who's producing it or company X and company Y. We want to make sure that people know who's doing it, promotes them. It has has transparency for the customer. Some of our partners are Columbia Gorge Organics, Don Poncho, Salem, Alpen Rose, Valenti Pasta, Brew Doctor, Smith Tea, Mill at Kings River. And they're all incredible. We also brought some of this olive oil from the Kings River. It's all California olive oil and it's incredibly versatile. They're done bread, I will cook with it. You can remove crabs from the wall. So let's come in next. We have another store on the way to us, more town squares opening in twenty twenty-five. Currently, we're in the middle of local berry season. We'll move on strawberries to blueberries very soon. We've got other partners for those, including our Fall Blueberry Fest, which is always exciting. Just get the little scoops of blueberries, eat them on the way home and nobody needs to know. Amazing stone fruits, saffron salmon, including a whole sock a scale that's coming up. Summer of Scoops Ice Cream, where every weekend we got a different ice cream, fifteen percent off, so start organizing your freezers now. We'll have Plastic Free July. That's all we'll do, all blueberries. Bottom of plastic waste. We also got a couple of community events. We're supporting Porch Fest. We're gonna have School of Rock playing outside of our doors. But just telling us we need a little bit. We'll figure it out. And and we're gonna have our cousins at the Cruisin' and the Voling Alley as well. To get involved, just come say hello. Our staff are super excited. It has been absolute blast to see folks coming through the door once, twice a week, once or twice a day. Get to get to know folks. You can enroll in our Neighbor Rewards program, which New Seasons Market staff are the savviest shoppers in the store, let me tell you, and the Neighbor Rewards program. Just in, just since the beginning of May, I have gotten fifteen percent off meat, six dollars off purchase of forty dollars twice, ten dollars off fifty, ninety-five dollar rewards because of compliance with every purchase. Twenty-five percent of our wellness and body care, ten dollars off your, it's just come to you at your email. It's just like a new adventure. You can explore our online aisle through Instacart, through DoorDash and coming soon, perhaps some other options, so that if you can't get to the store or are comfortable where you are, you can get delivery or do a store pickup. You can donate dinner with us. We talked a little bit about that around Thanksgiving time. We'll do that drive and you can engage with us on social media, Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn. Go back to those numbers that we talked about at the beginning. So the thing that you all did is the one hundred and forty-three thousand discreet transactions that we had so far. That was not included this week, so one hundred and forty-three thousand times folks have been to do that a couple of months ago. Sixty-five hundred dollars. There are talked about the Blue Slip program between the Blue Slip that we send home with our staff and the food that we send with our cleaning partners. It's about sixty-five hundred dollars a week that would have the waste that is going to few people in our communities. And the twenty-four is twenty-four years for New Seasons so far and what we hope to do is at least another twenty-four years. I I plan to take an early retirement, thirty years, and so hopefully I'll, we'll make it at least that long. At the heart of Milwaukee is the vibrant tapestry of community connection. We see it every day. I think someone just said, patient, their hair is looking okay when they come to the store, saying, no, they're gonna see folks. We we see that all the time where, you know, the the kids playing ball, our softball coach, somebody you see from church, neighbors down the street, you see each other and you spend twenty minutes talking in the homeless department or the coast department. Just every time I see them, it makes me happy. So thank you for the opportunity. I'll ask what questions you have.
Any have questions?
Well, thank you for being here. My, actually, our our teenager was really excited about the B Corp status because I learned about B corporations, feel like their COVID actually. Doing a little research while mom has meetings. And so anyway, they, you know, I think you can like know that at least one teenager is paying close attention. And then they not all of these are teenager stories, but there are also, like, we went I think at least three or four times during the opening week and and by the end of the week, I mean, just fun and finding all kinds of cool stuff. By the end of the week, our kiddo turned to me and said, you know, I'm really kind of worried about Luna's because there's so many people going into New Seasons and maybe they won't know that there's really good ice cream right around the corner. And so now I get to go home and tell them that the local finds was in this. And so I guess my question around that is, do you then stock those local finds across all of your stores or is this just hyper-local to Milwaukee?
Very good question. Well, Luna's specifically our Happy Valley store and our Milwaukee store are the first two that have it. It depends on the production capacity of, there are some folks, you know, some folks start out a garage and their capacity is five stores or two stores. And if the growth is there, they can spread out. I think that Luna's just thinking of how amazing it is. I would love to see it at a different store again. I had the same thought when we, we were coming in. I was like, oh geez. Three doors down and I and I went in and I, I wanted to make sure that our staff knew about Luna's, so we got some welcome gifts from our staff of gift cards. And it was thrilled that they were coming. Lunch options are gonna be great and I was really, really hoping that they were able to get a shelf to do it so quickly. Also got a theory about ice cream, which is kind of, which is kind of that there are like cat people and dog people and I think it's also buy strong peppers, it's really nice. That's part of ice cream that's got everything. Soft serve. Less discerning. And since we have going with, I know that a lot of you were excited.
Well, good. We're really excited that you're there in the in the store. I also kind of had a question about the hyper-local nature of the community service and the cans for kids program. So you know, I know a lot of the PTAs in the community also have those blue bags with the QR codes and I'm wondering if the donations that folks are making through, you know, through your program, do they stay in the school system that's here locally in Milwaukee or is it aggregated up?
I would have to look up to our current partners. I don't know, I'm not sure if you know.
Yeah, and we're changing some of our programs, so I'll get back to you. I don't have an answer to that. I think it used to be definitely saying local and I imagine that would be a priority, but the programs are evolving, so let me look ahead and I'll get to go.
Yeah, because I mean, if it's a matter of just getting some blue bags with the QR codes, the the schools have them and the PTAs would be probably really excited to hear from you. Because a lot of that funding goes right back into the schools that are here in Milwaukee. Then my last question selfishly is what about native plants? You know, like, have you ever thought about having like, you know, propagation tubes that somebody can, you know, just kind of like normalizing the snowberries and twin berries and things like that that can help regenerate, you know, our community here?
You're right. Our store manager has a agriculture background. Spire, you know, from from zero to getting a plant to take off, it can be a while before you
Yeah. Well, it's not time to plant until the fall, so make a winter. So we have time.
I mean, I think one thing that's going on here in town that could tie into that is we're a group of people looking to make, get Milwaukee certified as a B city, so a poll of their native plants could be in those partnership.
So exciting.
Cool, that's awesome. Questions, questions?
Well, first, I just want to say so excited to have you guys in town. I've been there a lot.
You went for lunch a couple of days ago.
Well, I do, I spend my mornings there a lot of time sitting with my coffee and working at your table and they're awesome. The internet is very I look at people all the time. So my hair looks really good.
So first of all, thank you so much. I was curious, you mentioned the number of transactions and and I don't, I don't have a good sense of how to compare that and I'm just wondering, is the, is the store doing what you'd hoped it would do? Is it being successful?
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit more than what we had hoped for. I I wouldn't have changed anything. We were incredibly busy at the start, which is, which is natural. Everyone has to check it out when you draw everybody from a lot of the other New Seasons around. And just when you start to get really worn down, then folks kind of go back to their original stores a little bit, maybe do some other things. That gives us a chance to refine our systems, catch our breath, do some hiring and get ready. So yeah, we're a little bit ahead of where we thought we would be. Have to be a little bit cagey about actual numbers other than the transactions, which is kind of vague. But yeah, we're, we're really happy with where we're at.
I mean, there's no way to know to break the transactions down into customers, right? Because people, some people are paying cash, they're not all. You can't tell us how many customers that is.
I mean, that's how many, yeah, I mean, there are
Well, because we've got people that are coming in twice a day.
Absolutely. I mean, I oftentimes make more transactions myself, I forget. Or, you know, you coffee and and work a session in the morning and then maybe you come back again. So as far as the number of discreet customers, we could probably take something like the number of transactions and then use our neighbor rewards data. But it was huge, yes.
And change, to your point, I don't think I'm giving away any sort of secret sauce and saying as we plan for future openings, we've had the conversation of we can't expect all to that is how successfully, that is how like this, this being a target ultimately is how, like, you know, we, we do think people are very welcoming to us when we come to communities, but this was just really
It was the hulks, right?
I'll also just say that every interaction I've had with staff has been awesome. They are very helpful. They're positive. The best and great, so I appreciate that. And then my last thing, I want to plug in, helping organize the Milwaukee Pride event. If you did small donation or even tabling at the event, it's June twenty ninth. We would love to have you. If you haven't already been reached out to, I don't know.
We've been reached out to and I think we need to circle back. I think we responded and we're still trying to close the circle. So you're, we're excited to be there. So you're we're excited to be there. Do some tabling and then try to see if I still have. That'd be awesome.
So my my question was kind of along the same lines, I uh you know, I suspect that uh you know. Grocery shop is you know, to a habit going to. You know, your store for twenty years and so uh changing those habits is probably, you know, a big deal for people. And so I'm glad that you you're off to a great start, but I suspect that. For over a year period of time, what kind of growth do you see? I can't even imagine.
Yeah, usually usually pretty strong when we look at year over year numbers, we would expect there to be positive same sales unit growth. Which is not the case for a store that's, you know, five, ten years down the road. Grocery is an incredibly competitive business because everyone eats or they're not everyone anymore. So it is a. It's a very low market, high competition business and yeah, anytime there's an opportunity. People, people fill it. Um but usually over the first year or so, we expect to see significant growth.
Again, welcome, you're, we we wait a long time, I look over there at the store and I go, I was like a giddy kid, you know?
I was gonna say, it was a sad day in Milwaukee when those signs went from a twenty twenty three to a probably more. There was a lot of like, well, I don't know, jokes and gave us a heads up that it was coming. It was.
There was a collective sign. I'm since we're sharing things, it was electric.
Oh, really?
Yes. So even though again, Chris had even put the street properly and that. It's probably good for me because I I have a shop.
But it it was interesting just from a collective new season standpoint, because we were kind of like on. This back and forth between our main street store and there was a lot of confusion amongst folks. They're like, well, Main Street is a new build. Like that seems like it would take a lot longer than this existing grocery store and it's like, well, it's more complicated than that. And I mean, I don't know all of the. You know, I don't know all of the things that happened, but it was the narrative from the community was like, well, we were already here, like, right? So it had been empty for a long time. Well, I was one of those people who was there every day between the soft opening, the actual opening. Um and and then I after the opening, which was so fun, I was gone for almost the whole of April, so. My 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 number of contributions in this one, three, three is something that might have been. But it's been great to have you attend. I want to ask a question that you may not be able to answer or you may not want to answer, but has the success of this store. Hurt the Selwood store?
When we open a store, it definitely has an impact on our other stores and usually along with that first year where you see same sales growth, you also see same unit. About um and I call it our Concordia store in northeast Portland, very dear to killing to burn. Um that store has now got. Two. Three stores in pretty close proximity and I think we could actually open a new season somehow, I'll be in the parking lot and a year later it wouldn't even hurt. So we expect to see a rebound for our Selwood store. You know, even now, if I were driving by a Selwood store and already grocery shop and there is no spot in the parking lot. And I think about what I needed and checked my list with my wife. Because that has been a limiting factor is just how how many people can get close enough to carry groceries back to them. So I fully expect Selwood to recover. A couple of other stores have had more minor reductions in in their sales. But folks tend to. Well, people move into the community, if it's a little bit less crowded, something you just like a little bit more. So I I fully expect to be back. Derek and I have both worked at the Selwood store. I have a lot, I have a lot of affection for it on the street myself. It's one of our most community centered stores. It's a great parking store. Um I expect.
Good to know, good to hear. Um I just uh I think we have to also give you credit for. You know, when once you said you were coming in. That seemed to turn Milwaukee marketplace around. One of those came in, Land Fitness came in. And now I use hardware, so that was uh you were really a catalyst in that. Shave that.
Oh, and we really have appreciated all of those folks as neighbors as well. I feel like there's a micro community in Milwaukee, Milwaukee, basically, we're all stopping by and giving each other coupons and you know, I recognize folks. So yeah, hopefully we'll continue to to fill in the rest of those businesses and hopefully. Businesses there where a draw, we can. Get all of them.
Yeah, I will say anecdotally as a non-resident, um our source port offices are in Revolution Hall, so southeast Portland. And I live in West Lynn and there are about ten ways. West Lynn is not a convenient place, but for whatever reason, there are about ten ways to get from southeast Portland to West Lynn. And now like with the Milwaukee marketplace, like it isn't, I. I purposefully drive that way because I know I have all of these resources. I'm stopping home, I can go right or go Walmart, I can go to these hardware, I can fall right there. In a way like if I'm going through like a speedo, I can't. Um and so you guys just have an incredible job and I think that as that grows, you're gonna see a lot of people who live in Happy Valley or whatever maybe something through there because you're. Really turning it into such a release for the folks that are always. As personally am very grateful.
Just have a comment, I'm sorry, not a question. I actually just wanted to thank also the previous council. Uh really spurred, started this conversation.
You know, former mayor Dambas spent a lot of time trying to get a trying to get a market, trying to get you guys in other markets and for years, for many years.
So I do, I want to give a credit to to them as well. That's his former city manager over and he also over also sort of basically acting as a city manager slash economic development board. And people flashing everything else. He's he's been phenomenal in really this this. Milwaukee uh economic renaissance, so to speak, that we're having, this this change that's bringing business here. Maintaining and making sure that they thrive, it's really that man right there. So the staff that works with me, so I just want to thank you. All your efforts, those issues.
Well, you're, it's almost competing because I'm like, which way do I go? Do I go down or go this way? So I mean, certainly that it's it's.
Mayor, just one more, should, quick question. Lightning round. Um I know that the parking lot has a lot to do with how many folks can easily get to the store and everything. Um it's a lot pavement. And I was wondering if you have had any conversations about adding tree canopy in either, you know, like. Stand well planters or breaking up and de-paving some spaces? Um or like, I mean, is that something that that interests you?
I I know that we asked the landlord or Kinto uh to to try to get some more things and. Do some of it. I'm not sure what else. Can do or would be possible.
Okay.
But we can also.
It's okay.
I agree, it's I I try to park well away from wherever a customer would want to park and my. Walk across the parking lot. I I uh yeah, the geese are the most natural thing.
Yeah, maybe and it's even just like, you know, a planter that has. Of course, a native tree, right? And so like vine maple or. Um I don't know, that it feels like that would make a lot of folks around here happier and. Um you know, that the geese would have some shades, you'd really be helping them who want a foul population in Milwaukee.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a that's a co- good conversation for really though, for sure. Along with repaving um the fast food joints, your your side got repaired, but the fast food joint side did not. Yeah. I think our um senior manager of sustainability would be right there with you and so I think it would probably be for our position to.
Yeah, let us know if we can be helpful in any of that because we have our transportation system plan. That's going on right now and uh it's a big conversation about what our system looks like and how um. You know, how complete it is. Um the discussion about tree canopy comes up a lot. At that table. With a lot of allies tree.
All right, well, you have you have something you want to.
Just one quick thing, oh, we did bring some of the sweet sunrise berries from under farm. We also brought some olive oil to spur, we didn't know. How many people would it be here at the public meeting, but we wanted the public to be able to have it. Um so we just put those on the table over there, uh some coupons, so. We have it, we'll be over to get it to people in Milwaukee.
There is another meeting upstairs. Well, thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for having us. This was fun. Nice to meet everyone.
All right. Our second item on the agenda tonight is uh three dimensional, three dimensional print. A report from Sean McKay of. And Ron Dylan.
I'm doing. Very good.
Scott, you can. Make sure it's visible as soon as.
Okay.
Well, as I told Scott, I hadn't been to Milwaukee before, so my GPS pulled right over to your former city. There was some momentary confusion and I thought, how can there be two city balls? Got to figure it out. It's exciting that you guys are trying. I just love the fact that Oregon is so protective of open space and I come from Boise, I was born there and I was a guy. And and it just makes me sad how they just, it's just destroyed. They built, they covered all the farm ground, it's gone, they. Traffic is a disaster and the idea that you're trying to do high density in the city. You're you're smarter than you can even grasp. That there's people now that the developers are going, well, maybe we should have thought this out. I'm going, yeah, gee, I tried to tell you that twenty five years ago, gosh. Um so good on you for looking at that high density in the city and protecting everything out there. You still have agriculture. Forty years from now. It's it's done and in the treasure valley, very sad.
Um Ron, where you get on, I just want to add that Sean has joined us.
Okay.
Then Sean, uh can you unmute yourself and see if we can hear you?
How's that?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us.
So I I should. Have Sean do first part of the presentation because he's connected to the three D printing world. Um a very exciting world and then I'm connected to. The heating, the three D printed houses world. So let's let Sean do his part and then I'll jump in after him.
Sean, I've made you a co-host and stopped sharing, so if you had a PowerPoint to share, you should be able to do that now.
Wonderful. Um yeah, I'll get I'll get into the PowerPoint here in just a second. I just want to introduce myself. Uh my name is Sean McKay and I'm the owner and co-founder of Layer Line Three D. Located here in Ontario, Oregon. And we're proud to say that we are currently building Oregon's first permitted. Three D concrete printed home um over here in Ontario. And we hope to have that finished here in the next thirty to sixty days and are just really excited to be showing that to the world and. Um you know, putting Oregon on the map for uh three D printed construction. This is a very innovative technology that has a lot of. Um you know. Cross impact as far as, you know, community involvement. We're getting involvement with the local. Community colleges and CTE programs, so it's it it's much more than just a um. One-off project, if you will, it's more the beginning of the establishment of. A new industry and a new sector in the in the construction industry here in Oregon, just. You know, as we anticipate what the future will be. So. Let me see if I can share this PowerPoint. Can everybody see that? Can you guys still hear me?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Um so we're gonna start here with a a little video and this. Uh this presentation covers a little bit of a wide range of of topics. It's not super lengthy, but you know, it's meant to introduce the technology a little bit. And then, you know, as well as uh an introduction to the homes themselves, so.
Printing is more affordable than traditional construction. We are able to complete jobs forty percent faster than tradition.
The tape audio is not really coming through.
Okay.
When you share your screen, it gives you the chance to also share computer audio.
I see. Well, we can, we'll just move on from the video. I don't want to get. That's the only audio in the presentation, so. Um so what is three D printing and um how does it apply to home building? So it's, you know, as you saw in the video there, the the printer is going around uh the model, a. That's preloaded into the printer and it's. Depositing cement basically at. Uh one inch thick layers and. You know, we we build the home uh layer by layer and for a thousand square foot home, our. Build time is about thirty hours right now. And this is a. Uh technology that we're seeing start to be widely adopted um by many contractors all across the United States. Um in. The United States, we're going to build about fifteen hundred three D printed homes this year, not myself, but the the industry. And that number is projected to increase to about fifteen thousand in two thousand twenty five. And continue to experience a year to year growth of, you know, twenty to thirty percent through about two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty five, so. Pretty good uh. Anticipation of growth in the industry and and adoption by by bigger players. Um the the nice thing about the three D printing is we can use it for a lot of different different applications. We we have a lot of ability to adjust our mixes for um. Whether that means a color additive, a high strength mix that can be used for more structural applications. Uh we're seeing this being used in underground precast. Uh situations for like sewer junction boxes and manhole boxes. We're seeing it used in more industrial applications. Um GE is currently three D printing windmill basis. So just a lot of uh. Different uses, we can um build landscaping features, park benches, stairs, skate parks. Just a lot of, a lot of unique shapes and design flexibility from the architectural side. To be able to build structures that are. A lot more cost prohibitive with traditional. To be able to build structures that are a lot more cost prohibitive with traditional building materials. So a lot of exciting opportunities there. Um, real time finishing, what what that means is that we have the ability to wet finish the the walls. Um, uh within a certain window after they're they're printed and that just. Again, more aesthetic and design flexibility um allows for the printed walls to end up being. The finished layer without the need for additional siding materials and um, you know, helps to reduce the cost of the overall build. So. We're still using some traditional components in our in our builds. Um, you know, we're we're still not three D printing the the roof or. The trusses or the cabinets just yet. I mean, I'm hopeful that someday we'll be there, but the. What's being three D printed is is basically the shell of the building, what would have traditionally been the two by fours and the sheet rock. And the siding, that's all replaced now with the three D printed material. Um, so from there, we end up using uh traditional trusses and. For our insulation, we're using a closed cell insulation, uh but traditional roofing systems, we have, we can do shingle or metal, you know, so all of your. Finishes that you would see in a in a normal house or traditional house are available options for three D printed construction. Um, so just a something everybody here is hyper aware of, obviously. Um, you know, our our governors recognize that we are experiencing um uh housing shortage along with. Most of the rest of the country and we have kind of a governor's mandate to increase our housing production. And this sounds good in context, but when you look at our construction population and the. Production that we've done over the last um ten years or so, it. It requires the need for innovative solutions. Um, so this is just a little bit of a chart showing. Our housing starts in Oregon over the last uh ten years or so and. Something that um Adam and I were talking about earlier today, it's it's really that unmet need. Of these single family homes and, you know, we use a lot of different terms, whether it's starter home. Or transitional home or workforce housing, you know, it's not just like this one small group of people with this unmet need. Or this specific income group, it's, you know, a big part of our population that. Needs homes that are under three hundred thousand dollars and it's crazy to even be saying that an affordable home is three hundred thousand dollars, but. You know, that's really, our goal is to produce homes under that price point that are attainable to a wide range of people. Um, so. I think some of you are also familiar with the the cottage cluster housing. Um, you know, when the meeting first started, we were talking about. Infill and increasing density in existing neighborhoods and, you know, the cottage clustered housing is really. One of the more palatable options for doing that. It it allows us to put multiple structures. On a single lot or a couple of adjoining lots without going to vertical and, you know, really maintaining the aesthetics of of these existing neighborhoods. And um, you know, from the conversations I've had, that seems to be a much more appealing uh situation to uh residents in those areas. Versus a multi-story um structure and. You can also see, I don't know if you guys can see my mouse, but you know, there's um. ADU options to increase density that way. Um, you know, just a lot of. Opportunity for that infill that you're talking about. Um, for the three D printed housing, we currently have a range of floor plans that are either completed or near completion. Completed and that's a single bedroom, eight hundred square foot unit, uh a two bedroom, two bath, twelve hundred square foot. And a three bedroom, two and a half bath, um fourteen hundred and fifty square feet.
So you're building all of those sizes in Ontario?
Um, currently we are building the two bedroom, uh two and a half bath.
How many square feet did you say the three bedroom was? I'm sorry.
The three bedroom is, it's that fourteen to fifteen hundred square feet. And we're we're kind of finalizing the design on the three bedroom now. Um, the the goal for that is to. Get it to where it meets most of the CCNR requirements for new subdivisions being developed in our area. The other thing that we've done, oh, go ahead.
I just said thank you.
Yeah, the other thing that we've done with our permitting and planning process, we've taken a little more proactive approach. Um, we have our plan sets approved as a ma- master plan set. For, it's currently approved for five eastern Oregon counties and we've um, we've had the plan review done at the state level. And what that does is it allows us to fast track the plan review process at the local level. Um, allowing for a little faster start time on these projects. And our, we have a very robust design and engineering team uh based out of Portland uh that has. A ton of experience and, you know, good reputation in this space and so we've been able to. Achieve what few people have um on the design and engineering and and permitting process, so. Um, this is really. More than an idea, it it's ready for implementation in the film. Um, as far as it and it's, it it has to be an all the way um. All the way through the process uh scenario, so we are also at the final stages of getting a mortgage. Um, for the customer on this first house, making sure that it's insurable, getting all of the appraisals, so it's uh. Much more than uh conception, it it's a, it's a viable, sellable product.
What will that house sell for?
Um, this house will sell for. We're selling just the structure and it was to a friend, so it's going to sell for two hundred thousand dollars, but they own the land, so that land, the land is not included in that price.
Okay. And that's two bedroom, finished wall. I mean, that's a ready to move in house, carpeting, flooring, whatever flooring, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So.
Go ahead. I I mean, I have a bunch of questions. We probably won't have time for all the questions that we have.
Yeah, and and I'm trying to move through this so we can, we can have uh questions because I'm not, I'm covering a lot of, a lot of stuff here. Um. So this is the, this is the floor plan for the home that's being built in Ontario right now. Um, it's it's basically this, there's there's some slight differences, but this gives you an idea of a layout. Um. Print time on this home is going to be right around thirty hours and that happens in uh nine separate printing sessions. So we're able to complete this home, uh the printed portion of the home in about fifteen uh working days. And as I was mentioning, the this plan sets approved across multiple jurisdictions. Um, the traditional windows and door systems, just like you'd see in any other new construction. Um, we we've met or exceeded all of Oregon's uh structural and most recent energy compliant. And um, this is the first permitted structure in in the state of, the state of Oregon, as I, as I mentioned earlier. Um. So, you know, I'm a um, I'm a single contractor bringing this innovation to the state and. Um, really trying to establish this as an industry. It's a um, a big problem that across. That trickles down from um, you know, really local government to builders and we're, we're part of that. That piece and just hoping to um. Help bridge that gap. So, this is the last slide here and. Why, why three D printing? Um, it it's a very innovative solution. One of, one of the problems facing. Our industry right now, the construction industry is we have a high retirement rate. The average age of a construction worker in um. The state right now is about fifty eight years old. The average age of a construction manager is in their sixties and um. We, we don't have the replacement rate to meet the retirement rate. This type of innovative technology is attractive to young people. It it fits with our automated lifestyle and our automated workforce, the the way things are moving. Um, you know, Oregon has one of the largest humanoid robot factories in the United States. A lot of people don't wear, aren't aware of that, but um. You know, some people will say that there's an automation revolution on on the way and uh. Three D printing is construction automation. It it's helping us to do more work with the smaller workforce, so that's really my uh. My selling point for the three D printed construction. Um, they're also very durable structures. Our uh, our concrete structures are mold resistant. We have up to a. Four hour fire rating on some of our structures and um the just overall very resilient. There's a couple of pictures. These are not all ours. Um, this is various pictures, but just gives you an idea of some of the. Uh, design capabilities that are opened up with this type of construction. Yeah, that's my, that's my presentation.
Hey, I know we probably all have a lot of questions, but we've only got about ten minutes left, so we want to give Mr. Dillon maybe some time and then we'll. Like, we'll have whatever amount of questions we can have.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's very exciting. The first time I saw the three D print, I went, wow, that's gonna be the way of the future. And um. I'm the, I'm the Carbonic Heat and I will leave you to see. This is the coolest. Construction product that you've never heard of. You've never heard of it because the company owner is seventeen, eighteen years old and he doesn't. Know what social media is and we've remained invisible, but anybody that's put this in their house has raved about it. It's uh. It started out as the way to warm your bathroom floor and then. A few years ago, somebody said, well, can I heat my bedroom floor? Okay, and then somebody said, well, can I eat my entire house? Well, gosh, I don't know. We've never tried that, you know? Then we did and now we're doing entire houses. The company owner, my boss Conrad, just, we're, our bread and butter is gonna be the smaller entry level houses, uh eight hundred to fifteen hundred square feet. But Conrad just had a very wealthy person in Sun Valley say, I want to do my seventeen dollar, forty four hundred square foot two story house. Can I do that? Yes, you can. So they did the entire house. They did the sidewalks. They did the driveway. They did the roof edges and. It's, it's the coolest thing you've ever seen. Um, carbonic heat can go under virtually anything you can think of. Carpeting, cement, asphalt, laminate, tile, hardwood. Um, I'm trying to get a breakthrough into the greenhouse industry because they need some better heating solutions. So we are working closely with um with Sean and the parent company that owns the printer, that that sold him a printer. Um, to become the heating product of choice. The thing I can add in here is if if you guys in your future builds. Don't do entirely cement three D printed houses, which I hope you do, but if you said, well, let's do a few this way or a few this way. Carbonic heat, we believe, would still be your product of choice. We can go toe to toe with anybody on price and here's the clincher. In a three D printed house environment, you don't want to deal with ductwork. You've got a slab for, how are you supposed to put ductwork under there? You've got cement walls. This stuff, you just put it, you you can either put it on top of this cement and then put tile, laminate, whatever. Vinyl, linoleum on top of it, or you can put it under the cement, under a four inch slab. And have it heat that way. We put an insulating medium under it and that directs the heat upward and. Roll into the slides that I that I have got up there. Well, they're not up there right now. The slides.
Well, this, this one. There's so many minds up here. Okay.
Okay, there we go. You can see the car- carbonic heat comes in a hundred and sixty four foot long roll and it's forty one inches wide. You can see them rolling out there. Um, as they're building a really nice bathroom. And then some of the other slides are kind of covered there. You can see a sidewalk heated by carbonic heat. Um. Well, that just doesn't want to go away.
There we go.
Okay. Um, you've got a roof edge in Colorado that's heated by carbonic heat. Um, and if we can move on to the next, the second slide. Oregon, of course, is blessed with um. With cheap electricity, the ninth lowest in the United States, so we've got a, you could, you could heat. Um, a thousand square foot house during the winter for a hundred and fifty six dollars and twenty one cents a month with carbonic heat. That's a good deal. Of course, we're not, we're not using anything petroleum based. We're not natural gas. We're not any of that. We're clean electricity. And the other thing that I have learned about heat, you know, when we were kids, we all would be, our feet would be cold, we'd be freezing. What do you do? You go stand over the heat register. And moving heat is not really what you want. You want the floor warm and the heat rising and no air movement. And we've learned that we can run the thermostats four to seven degrees lower using a radiant force system. Now, there are certainly other radiant force systems out there. You can go into any Home Depot and find it, but those are a mash type product. That is fragile. This stuff you can, you can nail it down, you can staple it down, you can screw it down, you can glue it down, you can beat the tar out of it. I want to leave that sample out and let your kids just try to terrorize that sample and see if they can tear it up. It's very tough. Um, the only, they have three narrow copper strips that are embedded in it. You can't compromise those, but that gives you. Fast areas that you can beat on and nail through and not harm in any way, shape or form. Um. We've currently got a Utah developer that we're talking with who's very excited about three D printing and carbonic heat. And he asked us to give him a quote on heating over a mile sidewalk. And this really made my head turn around. He said, what would it cost me to heat one and a half miles of roadway in my subdivision? I don't think we can make the numbers work, but we've got an engineer working on it because he said, I'm. Because he said, I want to advertise um heated roads in my subdivision. Uh, I'm also talking with a guy up in Maine who is incredibly excited. And that's what it's hard for Sean to convey being remotely like that. If he were here with me, he'd have the pom poms and he'd want to jump up and down like I am. Um, this is cool. I mean, this is the future. 3D printed houses and all the cool products that for lack of a better term are going to ride the coattails and ride the wave. Carbonic heat, there's a product that I hope you get a chance to learn about. I don't work for them, so I'm not going to roll it out. But it's called Bi-Ax Foundation Systems. They're fantastic uh, for unstable soil and slopes uh, property. Um, there's some new types of foam insulation that are coming out that are very exciting. You're gonna, we're going to change the world of the construction industry. And I found, I have a lot of friends in the construction industry. Unfortunately, those guys are pretty close minded. They don't want to get outside the box. They want to do it the way grandpa did it nineteen sixty two. And some of them are gonna say, ah, 3D print, that's not going to, ah, carbonic heat. You don't want to, well, they're wrong. The time marches on, technology marches on, and there's some really cool stuff that I'm I'm pleased that we're able to show you guys. And I I found Adam by by searching on Facebook and I saw that he was interested in knowing more about 3D print. So I latched on to him and here I am.
I appreciate you being here, Ron. Just to add, and Sean, you you as well, if you're still there. I just to add that this is technology that the Department of Defense is actually now using. Uh, they're using 3D printed to now put their bearings uh, for housing, their own base housing for their So usually the DOD is pretty smart when it comes to technology, doing the right thing. And they were, they're quoted in an article as to why they're using this technology. And the thing they said is that it's more sustainable and it's cheaper. Those were the biggest things. So uh, that that tells you enough. Defense is doing it and it's, so I could probably go into it too. But uh, yeah, I've been on this for probably since twenty twenty is when I first started learning about 3D printed housing. And since then, I I've not been able to let go of it because I see that it's a solution to a lot of uh, our regional issues, if not the national level. So I appreciate you both being here. If there's any questions I think we have, I'd love to
Well, I have a ton of questions that were up to the next items time. Uh, if anybody has any one or two burning questions that they want to ask.
Sure.
I mean, I guess one question I'd have is, do you expect the price point? Once you get into a bigger production mode, would the price point come down? Or is two hundred thousand for a twelve hundred square foot, two hundred thousand plus land for a twelve hundred square foot house about what you would expect? And also called out um cottage clusters and I wondered also about townhomes though.
Yes, um, you know, any of those kind of multi doors, whether you know, we're talking uh duplex, triplex. As far as multi story townhomes, um, it's definitely capable um with the printer. Just not something that we've had um designed at this time. But not um, there's other operators within our owner group that have built multi story structures, so um completely possible. And as to the price point, yeah, absolutely. We um, we expect that that price to come down. You know, that's just all the costs associated with this being the first home. Um, so, yeah, definitely have a lower price target. And uh, just to add to that, the it becomes, the price point becomes much more efficient as we have multiple structures that are joining each other. Um, we have a little bit higher cost on just individual structures. Just because of some of the mobilization cost and whatnot.
Nobody has any burning questions? Then we will thank you for coming and for coming and for uh, joining us from Eastern Oregon. And do let us know if there's something that coming in in the, you know, within a half hour, forty five minute drive of the metro area. I would love to go see what.
Well, I'm actually thinking a sparrow site. I'd like to have a table with sparrow sites potentially. Been looking at that for some, we're, we've had a workforce housing or lack of workforce housing that I've met with the county that we're getting single residency occupancy transitional housing. Um, and since the land at this point isn't an issue because we own it, we could probably get at that price point and have a decent number of starter homes for people to get into. Particularly some of those people, some of those families that have been moved, removed from the scattered sites, right? Uh, this is, this is kind of where I see this kind of all tied together. Along with some of the money that's available at the state of um, with the passing of S B fifteen to the seven. So I'm hoping that this thorough science is a potential.
Well, we'll be talking about that this fall.
Yeah, I guess from um, from our standpoint, you know, I'm I'm excited to introduce the the technology to the council. But um, more so, you know, really looking for those partnership projects of um, cities that are looking for uh, supplying some of this workforce transitional housing. Um, you know, again, we have a lot of really good design flexibility and um, kind of like what's in the bottom of the screen here. Uh, it, you know, the cottage clusters and some of this higher density housing um, is a great use of this 3D printed technology. So um, I hope that we can find a way to work together in the future.
Great, well, thank you again. Oh.
Is it okay? Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, hey, Sean, Joseph Billy, we're the director here. Just curious, did in Ontario, did you have to use any um, building code allowances or interpretations that from their building official? Did that happen at all?
Um, you kind of broke up towards the end there. And can you say that one more time?
It's okay. Actually, Sean, I'll I'll email you. I might even question.
That's a good question.
Okay, great.
Did you ask, the question was, did you have any issues? Like, did you need any variances or any code exceptions in order to build this home in Ontario?
No, because we worked directly with the state building code division. Um, and uh, along with our local building official. So there's a few more inspections and structural observations on this project. But it was actually a very seamless um, process with our local building official. It um, not really different than any other um residential home build that we've done.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Great, well, thank you for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. With that, we will move on to our final presentation today, which is uh, the Clackamas Workforce Partnership. Um, we're studying a lot of great um, work and we're just um uh, workforce, they're spreading this and all kinds of things. Um, and helping employers. Uh, so, should it over to Bridget Daisy? Are you alone? We had a second person down.
Yes, uh, I don't think she was feeling well. So you're stuck with just me. Um, uh, thank you so much, Mayor Beadie and councillors for uh, letting me join you today and share a little bit more about our work and some things that we're really excited about um, coming into this new uh, program here for us. Um, as Scott teased up my PowerPoint, um, again, Bridget Daisy, she's her they are the executive director of Clackamas Workforce Partnership. And we are the local nonprofit workforce development board that serves Clackamas County. Here we go. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Clackamas Workforce Partnership is a public private partnership um, that is charged with oversight of our local public workforce development system. Um, for us, workforce is just another way to say people. And what people need in our community transcends education and training, uh, which is what what has been traditionally thought of as workforce development. There we go. Uh, our mission is to create a more diverse, equitable and inclusive workforce through collaboration and investments in people and businesses in Clackamas County. We envision a future where all people in Clackamas County thrive with fulfilling employment, flourishing businesses and sustained economic prosperity. And our guiding values are to be collaborative, responsive, solutions oriented, innovative and equitable. Uh, we are guided by Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Um, WIOA our funds, WIOA funds are provided to each state, which then invest these funds into workforce services. In uh, states may seek additional workforce funds or provide additional workforce funding through state budgets. In Oregon, workforce funds are distributed uh, through several partners. Um, with some funds invested locally through the Higher Education Coordinating Commission um, into nine distinct workforce regions. These regions are determined by population size, major industries and resources in each region. Um, as a workforce board, we're responsible for managing state and work, state and federal workforce dollars allocated to our region. Uh, we secure additional funds outside of WIOA and coordinate and invest those funds in employment and training services based on the needs of people and employers in our local area. These services are provided through a local one stop or America's Job Center. Um, Clackamas County is one of nine local workforce regions in the state. The Board of Directors is a fifty one percent private sector led board, twenty percent labor, union and apprenticeship. Um, with the remaining board seats being public entities and education. This formula is a ban, a federal mandated formula through WIOA. Um, and we can delve deeper into the thirteen functions. Um, I have several favorites on this list. Um, if you'd like more information, we can certainly revisit this slide. And I can talk about how we do this work locally um, and provide any examples of what this looks like in action. Uh, Clackamas Workforce, I think it's important to note, Clackamas Workforce Partnership does not provide direct services. Um, CWP convenes individuals and organizations from private and public sectors and uh, to identify issues impacting local workforce system, uh, our economy and Clackamas County more broadly. We work with these partners and community members to develop solutions to the social issues impacting the county and helps create connections and develop relationships among service providers to ensure coordinated services, better resource referrals and more efficient use of services. Um, Clackamas Workforce Partnership with uh, we work with sectors uh, that include behavioral mental health, manufacturing, early care and education, childcare, healthcare, construction, clean energy, government, education, social services, economic development, nonprofits and more. Uh, we work with each sector individually, but also facilitate collaborative relationships between the sec- the sectors um, for mutual investment and aligned approach uh, to our community and to support resources and advocacy. I mentioned before our America's Job Center or One Stop. Uh, WorkSource is our umbrella brand here in Oregon. Uh, no one partner owns WorkSource um, or provides all the services in the community. Our board oversees the WorkSource Clackamas site and the services underneath that umbrella. Um, coordination is vital for all of these programs to work. And I'll uh, just name our partners up there, this uh, Oregon Employment Department, uh, Clackamas Community College, the Oregon Department of Human Services, both self sufficiency and vocational rehab. Um, Job Corps, Timberlake, which is outside of Estacada, Clackamas County, several of their departments. Um, the Immigrant Refugee Community Organization, Clackamas Education Service District, East Surf Seals, Oregon and the Oregon Commission for the Line. Um, here are some other partners that are also utilizing and tapping into our network um, that we are either contracting with or providing services through our WorkSource One Stop. Our systems partner secures and distributes funds for work readiness programs, employment and wraparound services. These include traditional employment and training programs, career coaching, specific services, priority populations like veterans, youth and young adults, older workers, people with disabilities, among others, and funding for wraparound supports to stabilize people's lives as they search for jobs, expand career prospects and or complete uh, education and training programs. Many people are welcome through WorkSource, are first time job seekers, people looking to change jobs or in transition to new careers. People who've been laid off, people who are unemployed, um, those who are seeking new skills or professional credentials, or simply wanting to learn new things so that they're competitive in today's job market. Uh, if businesses are or employers in our community are looking to grow, start, downsize or close, there is something available for all in our system um, and employers of all sizes. Businesses can find employees, access new talent through recruitment programs, training programs, customized training and professional development. We also offer rapid response and layout prevention, work sites, work site accessibility, accommodations, entrepreneurship programs, tax abatement and wage reimbursement, site selection assistance, lane improvements, business counseling, upplacement services, human resources assistance and labor market information and data analytics. Um, for community partners, we connect on all things related to uh, what people need in our community and including and not limited to childcare, transportation, professional development and network building. A few specific services available to people in our community include uh, interview prep, resume development, career coaching and uh, and job training programs. Uh, we can do all the job training programs as well as individual training accounts through a local training provider. Um, you can see more of our data and outputs in our community on our website uh, on our impacts, trends and annual reports. But I wanted to highlight that we see over four thousand people come through WorkSource Clackamas every year. Uh, and through all of our system programs are able to wrap around and provide both service delivery. Um, we are uh, our median uh, earnings, um, so that's nine thousand dollars a quarter. So we're averaging individuals going in at nine thousand dollars um, a quarter uh, to start. And what's important to that is a lot of the people that we're working with, this is either their first job or they're coming from uh, or they have significant barriers to employment. So um, we're really proud of our uh, our placement rates as well as our median wages. Um, and we're consistently meeting and exceeding both our WIOA measures and our other funding strengths. Um, what I really want to talk about is what we're in the midst of doing. And so I wanted to highlight, you can't see at the very top there, but we're in the midst of launching our new strategic plan that launches July one. Um, within that plan, we'll be continue to work on systems, people and business services um, and creating greater integration between all of our program partners. Um, I want to highlight some of the work we are doing related to construction, the internet, the interstate bridge replacement project. We just did a study with them, but what the workforce needs are going to be in order to provide or to replace the bridge. And it will be the single biggest uh, project in the country um, right here in the Pacific Northwest. Um, once it gets under uh, it's it's underway. And um, it's going to be tens of thousands of jobs that we're going to be, that are going to be created. And we need a workforce to be able to uh, replace that bridge and all of the supports to help support those workers. Uh, we're doing more work around clean energy with Portland General Electric, um, expanding career exploration for using in adults in clean energy. Um, we uh, helped launch the Childcare Coalition here in Clackamas County, but then also are doing some work at the statewide level. Um, I do want to highlight that uh, one of the things that we worked on with the city of Milwaukee several years ago through the prosperity uh, collaboratives that the county invested in was an employer toolkit. Um, many people and uh, regions from around the state began picking up that toolkit and utilizing it. Um, and so we were really excited that that was available to them. And now we're going to be creating a statewide one based on the one that was developed here with the city of Milwaukee. So we're um, uh, pretty eager to get that underway. Uh, we're expanding Benefits Navigator, um, Clean Safe Clackamas is our expansion clinic. We can talk about that. Uh, we're in the midst of WorkSource modernization and expanding more youth internships and work experiences. Um, the Oregon Employment and Training Association is professionalizing the world, the workforce uh, professionals in the state. Um, and so we're offering um, training and uh, summits and uh, and and conferences uh, to direct service providers from our nonprofits and our public sector partners and training partners. And then we have, a couple of years ago, we launched a behavioral health consortia, which is also establishing some uh, best practices and and uh, helping to solve some issues related to behavioral mental health. Now, there's so much more that we are doing um, both as a board, an organization and with our partners and so much more that we can do in partnership with uh, with folks like you. Uh, so uh, I will Uh, so uh, I will pause and see what questions you have for me about our work.
When you started out saying you're not a service provider.
We are not.
But then you talked about this WorkSource. So, explain the, explain that.
Yeah, I'm gonna um, go back to our thirteen functions. So one of the requirements is that we uh, with, that we're contract, that we contract our services out. So we're required to be a neutral convener of these conversations with employers and community partners. And so, um, all of our direct services are contracted out through organizations like the Clackamas Community College, Education Service District, Immigrant Refugee Community Organization, and Ant Farm. Um, and then we also uh, are promoting broader WorkSource services that our other partners are providing. So we are, we are the, or our board is the strategic oversight of this system and helping to guide all of the work that our partners are doing.
Where, where do you get your funding?
Uh, both federal, state, and then, we're a nonprofit, so we're also applying for grants through foundations and other philanthropic organizations. Um, but we do have a base level of funding through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act at the, from the federal level. Um, and those federal dollars flow through each state. And then the state decides, you know, how they uh, break those up. Our portion of WIIOA is Title 1B, which designates us as the local workforce board, and then also provides some services, um, and uh, training support dollars for youth, adults, and dislocated workers, uh, as well as business services. So, um, our base level, our base funding again is WIIOA. It's about fifty percent of our funds, um, year over year. But I will say since, or since two thousand or over the last twenty years, we've seen a fifty percent cut in WIIOA at the federal level. Um, so we've really been making up the difference with either state funds or again, competitive grants.
Does every state have, like, Oregon has nine? Every state has?
Every, every state has workforce boards. Um, some states like, uh, for example, North Dakota, there's one workforce board for the whole state. Um, the state of Nevada has two workforce boards, one for the northern um, part of the state and one for the southern. I think in uh, in Washington, I think there are twelve or fourteen boards. Uh, California has twenty or thirty of them. So it's just, it, it's, it, it's just whatever is going on as far as the economy within that state, as far as how many workforce boards there are and what that makeup is. But the idea is that things happen at the local level. Those relationships, local economies are really unique. What's true in Clackamas isn't true in Ontario or in Southern Oregon. And so we really need to um, have our finger on the pulse of what's going on in the community, what people are needing, what employers are needing, what industry is needing, so that we can uh, be more responsive uh, to those needs. Um, as opposed to everything being done at a state level with kind of a rubber stamp or, you know, one-size-fits-all type of model.
Bridget, I'm sorry I came in late. I, I, I saw, I think I saw all of the presentation earlier. But did you touch on the fact that we had, I think it was forty-three thousand construction workers in the area? Not just slum?
Um, I don't know that this slides of this, but we do have many, many construction workers.
Yeah, I just wanted to share something with the, with the, with uh, the council for a moment. I said, if you look at that number, and I think the number was forty-three thousand in the metro area, and you go, wow, that's a lot. And uh, let me tell you why that is. And that's because of the high-tech industry in the areas specifically of Washington, Washington County. And so, um, excuse me, I'll, I'll get there. There's this thing called Moore's Law, which basically says the speed and capacity of a, of a computer chip is going to double every eighteen months. So if you go over there to the Intel facilities, uh, fabrication plants, they're continually being rebuilt. So there might be a fab that's being dismantled because it was just completed the last generation of, of, of uh, microprocessors. The new one is being built to come online and there's one in operation. So those places are being rebuilt every eighteen months. It's a big draw of construction workers of every variety. And so most natural areas decide, don't attack that because that is such a unique sort of thing that not, never many areas have. And uh, they're very well-paying jobs and they suck a lot of construction workers out of residential buildings, uh, out, home and apartment buildings. So there's always, you know, a, a supply issue of the train workers. So I just wanted to share that, it's a little bit unique and some people may not be aware of it.
You probably saw that in the IVR um, report, the interstate bridge replacement.
Maybe, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
That's good, good.
But it'll be even more a challenge then.
Oh, what can we expect? Well, and um, the presentation before, you know, we do have an aging workforce. And uh, it's not that we have a people shortage, we have a, we have a quality job shortage. And so, um, there are a lot of quality jobs in the construction, in the construction industry. So we're really attuned to how we connect more people in our community to those opportunities. But we'd also like to turn more jobs in our community into quality jobs, uh, like in the care industry. We know that uh, the care industry, childcare, adult care, has been historically undervalued in our society. And we'd like to see that change and that tide turn. And so, um, through the Workforce Board advocacy, we can really, um, kind of, we can take that private-public partnership voice and elevate issues that are impacting people like childcare and housing um, and talk about how the interconnectedness of things. Because, um, just for example, what got me here today was uh, was, you know, me being able to take a shower and have water, my car having gas in it, um, having a roof over my head, being able to eat, um, uh, having a phone and access to all of the internet and the work, my inner, my emails and communication with people. I can go on and on about what got me here today. All of those things were empowered by people, were jobs that, you know, that made sure that we had clean water, that made sure that my phone was working and that things were working. And so it's honoring, it's honoring workers in our community, that's really important. And uh, making sure that they have what they need to live and thrive in our community. And right now, there's just so many people that are struggling. And also, again, there's a skills mismatch. Uh, we have people who are, um, who are here and they want to work. And uh, they, but they don't have childcare, they don't have the things that they need um, to remove those barriers so that they can get to that next job or that career. Uh, and that's what we are all about, is breaking generational poverty and ensuring that, again, community members are able to thrive in place and that we're leaving, um, the world a better place than, than we found it. Um, and I think, and the work that the Workforce Board does, being uh, employer-driven, um, really creates that conversation that we can have with local industry partners from manufacturing, construction, healthcare, technology, to say, what is it that you need? And how do we make sure that there's this mutual benefit for community and, and the worker, and the work that you've done? Questions?
No, no questions. Um, so you had mentioned quality jobs, and what came to mind for me was the solar industry. And when that really expanded, uh, there were a lot of lower-level installer jobs, but not a whole lot of like, uh, engineer or management kind of jobs. And I'm wondering if you are noticing, um, that, that trend in other industries and how that plays out in the jobs that you're able to, to find folks?
Yeah, I see it playing out in some different ways. Um, we're, it, you know, how things, the pendulum is swinging back with the clean tech or clean energy coming on force. And I, I, I'd say that PGE is being really intentional. They began a clean, um, a clean energy coalition a few years back to mirror the industry consortium that our state board was tapping up for manufacturing, healthcare, and technology. And they are thinking about the pathways, um, so that when somebody starts, that there are opportunities for them to advance into other careers and opportunities. And it really is about building competencies, that their skills will be transferable into other industries and occupations. But what I would say is, we do have a lot of like, dead end, or like, not dead end, but like, opportunities where it kind of stops there within an industry. And so that's the work that we can do along with those employer partners is to help build like, what is, what's the infrastructure that it's going to take for us to build a career pathway or that scaffolding for an individual to move up within a field? Um, even things like uh, customer service, or retail, or food service, there's opportunities for that growth. And so we want to be able to articulate that more clearly to the community so that they know that when they get into something, there's going to be something for them to move up to, um, as they express that interest. Um, and if, if, if the part, we need employers to be able to help guide that work. It's not, it can't be something that we just uh, create from, you know, us, from our work as a nonprofit or public entity. Uh, so that, that, we need that partnership with our, with our employers.
Uh, do you have the resources? And I mean, I think you said that there's twenty percent labor on your board. So, I mean, I guess I'm wondering about paid apprenticeship programs and if those are, are provided. Uh, and you just connect to those, or if you're using the uh, federal and state funding to provide them?
We, uh, we're doing a few different things. So, um, through a traditional like trades apprenticeships, we're doing a lot of, a lot of connecting the dots, helping to support people. Some folks will come in through WorkSource and then we refer them onto pre-apprenticeship programs so they can get some of that gap skill or, um, uh, fill in some of their gaps so that they're more competitive for those apprenticeship programs. Um, and then helping them either with wraparound services or other uh, resources, uh, as long as there's, you know, connected to our system. We're also helping to prop up additional apprenticeship programs, like for our uh, Department of Human Services, governments, and other area where we also see a lot of, um, a lot of uh, aging, a, a lot of aging workforce and uh, and government needing to replace those workers. Um, and so we're helping ODA just create an apprenticeship program there and then also, um, helped create one for the early care and apprentice, or early care and education apprenticeship for preschool teachers, um, as a pilot. Um, the, the challenge is that apprenticeship programs, um, they have to be funded and supported by employers um, in that industry. Um, and employers in the care industry, um, usually can't afford to support people that are in development um, the way that we really need them to. So I think there are going to need to be some infrastructure investments to really support people in apprenticeships. But earn while you wear models are the, the way that the people, like, they're needed. Because so few people can take time, two to four years off of work um, in order to go to school and learn a new trade. And so we really need uh, work experiences on the job training and, and more apprenticeship model um, with non-traditional government side of the trades, for sure.
Well, I'm thinking especially about, um, justice-involved populations. You know, folks that are re-entering the community after serving time and, and the, that period of time where stability is so critically important. Um, what are, what can we do to help, um, create more paid apprenticeship programs?
Uh, I think different things. Again, it's working with, um, industry partners to recognize the value of a registered apprenticeship program. Cause a registered apprenticeship program, um, it creates that opportunity for somebody who says, okay, that, I learned these skills, I have these skills, and I can transfer those if I decide to move across the state or into another, uh, or into another state. I, I, when, where, where, when you're a carpenter, you're, you can be a carpenter anywhere type of things. Um, so we really need, uh, we need more employers to value, um, that they can be a partnership with, um, bringing more people into the, into their employment space. Um, it, it takes, it takes money, it takes time for them to really step into that space. And so we can incent them through grants, um, and opportunities. So that's something that we'll do is apply for, um, resources so that we can, um, pilot something so that we can get them, so we can help employers recognize that there's value in trying something different or new. Uh, but we really need employers to step into that space. For the care industry or, uh, for, or for industries where they will need subsidized support, um, we need advocacy at the legislative level. Um, but it's, 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 it's a partnership because it, them working alongside of employees to say, these are the skills that are necessary. Cause every apprenticeship program has to have, uh, a JTC, which is both, uh, leaders at that, um, business as well as employees. And that type of, uh, that type of relationship is just, is just invaluable. Um, and we need more of that.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll save some questions for offline because I do, I would love to learn more about the expungement. When I, the, I, I guess, I'll just pre. And I'm, I'm gonna just ask my question. Um, I'm wondering about the partnership with the courts and whether this is a rolling expungement or, uh, episodic events that you host? And then what the, what the lag time is to be able to get that administratively through the court system and how we can support kind of streamline that a bit more?
Oh geez, that's, okay, let's see, okay, well, and that's, no, yeah. And, and I want to, but I want to dig into that because I think, um, I think the courts are warming up to it, uh, more so. So with the law that changed a couple of years ago that made it, um, more cost-effective and accessible for people to get their records expunged, um, that, that was a game changer for the state of Oregon. And let me just give you some numbers. We just had a clinic on Monday night. Um, and we did it, we hosted it at the free clinic that just opened up over at Clackamas Community College. And we had forty-three expungements, two gender marker changes, five eviction expungements, three immigrant immigration analysis meetings, ten medical referrals, and five signups for additional support, and five driver's license referrals. So our clean slate is doing all of those within one clinic um, and offering that, that suite of services at no cost to the public. Um, and even paying for the, uh, the state's, or the police, uh, the fingerprinting and that we have to submit, it's thirty-three dollars, we're paying, we're funding that with grant funds. Um, so that, that's even an additional cost that they don't have to bear. Um, but it takes time. So even once their records expunged, depending on where their record is. So if it was only in one county, it's going to be a little bit easier. But if they had records or convictions in multiple, multiple counties, they could go to each of those counties and ask for their, those records to be expunged, if they're expungable. Um, and then I'd also say that, um, Multnomah County, uh, about a month ago was a year behind with all of their expungement records, uh, paperwork processing. And so that just holds people up. And we know that if somebody doesn't get their record expunged, that's, that's holding them up for jobs, that's holding them up for housing, that's holding them up for volunteering at their kid's school. Um, and so it is critical that this service is available to people and that we're, we're demystifying it. And for so many people that are coming out of incarceration or who've engaged with the legal system, there's a lack of trust, like, they're, they're burnt out. And so for them to engage with a system where we're like, we're going to help you, um, get this, we'll get over this hurdle, and then let's help you get the next job, and let's, let's help you get to your next goal. And then let's help you get to whatever it is that you need to do next. Um, and that's really what our system provides because it's all about all of those coordinated services because it's not just education and training, it's all of those things. So yeah, there's, um, there's a lot of good work with that. So I'd love to, uh, answer those questions.
Well, I think in your materials, you said those are monthly.
Those are monthly, yes, in Oregon, so. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, and, uh, we're hoping that they expand across the state because we get people from all over the state coming to Oregon City.
Oh, really?
Um, to get their records expunged because those services aren't available. Um, Amanda, who is our lead for this project, and this is her passion project, um, she actually did some work with the Stellet's Tribe, um, and went out there and was doing a clinic. And they were wanting to like, bring back more of that service. So we just need more of that, um, so that we can, uh, really remove those barriers for people. So it's a, that's a big one.
I'm, I'm fascinated by this. I mean, how many people would run a clinic? How many, how many resources do you need to run a clinic like that?
Uh, well, it, 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 it depends. So, um, we, recent, like, in the last six months, we were able to purchase through some grant funding a, uh, a fingerprinting machine, and that saved a lot of time. So when we were doing fingerprints on paper, um, with ink, uh, we would need no less than three people that were kind of, uh, taking care of that. And it just took time because even like, if it smudged, we'd have to do it over. So the, the machines are just a super time saver and volunteer saver. Um, I'd say minimum, we could probably do a clinic with, um, five people. Um, but we always have a turn, an attorney present. Um, and we're funding those attorneys to, again, talk through some of those eviction expungements, um, DACA renewals, um, anything else that might come up that they're going to need help, uh, you know, navigating within the legal system. We've also created a partnership with the clerk's office where they're coming onsite and helping people register for vote, to vote, like, right there as they're, uh, getting their record expunged. So it really is a one-stop shop, which we want our WorkSource Center to look and feel like for people um, in the which we want our WorkSource Center to look and feel like for people. Um and the clinic is just a way to do that. Um but we're offering additional services and so a clinic might have ten or so volunteers offering various uh programs and other resources that are available. But the clinic itself should um could probably operate on four to five to serve, you know, if we thought we were gonna see um fifty to seventy-five people.
Is this finally known?
Um, no. I mean, we're in traps.
That there are these clinics, I mean, I see it on Facebook and stuff.
There is.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's online.
But if it's known to the population, they're just trying to get to.
Right, it's a lot of, yeah, I, that's a different question.
I never, I'm someone who found out it's funny. Um I did, this was a year ago and I, I know most clinics, I didn't know. I I ended up just basically being asked questions on the court system. And you're right, when, when you show up in the court system, there is a lot of mistrust. You just looked at it, right? Like they need to, they have their judgments to buy it so. I just, I appreciate this very much. If there's any way to get to the right population of people, whether that's through the DA's office or whether it's going into the courts themselves. Cause I know, or excuse me, not the courts, but jails themselves. I know we took a tour of Clocomus County Jail and they have some pretty good forums that they do with inmates. It'd be great if there was a way to link that together so when they come out. So I know there's certain offenses, you have to, you have to wait for a certain time till they get the follow-ups. But in the cases of that, you know, just getting a prepared cabinet apology is critical. Getting them to pay for their security so they're not doing like, you know, some stuff. The gap, that's the gap. It's the same gap that vets face when they leave the service and they wait for their benefits, right? It's like that gap is what happens then. And that's usually when you get disconnected by the time that you get what you need is to it.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe our team, uh we have people in town working in this department and around our library today, you know, um loved ones and different groups working with the homeless population. And and maybe they're aware and maybe they send people there, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, we certainly have the uh farmer's market as a way to reach people. We have city, we do, we could have flyers and information there. That's not necessarily gonna reach, that's, you know, very much of the target population, but might reach some, might reach people who have, yes, you never know, you never know.
Yeah, there's also a lot of worry about. I think there's a, a lot of people who, if they get their records expunged or a family member did, uh we've had people come back and be like, I brought my brother, I brought my uncle, I brought my, my, my nephews and my kids. You know, if if they, if they know that that's something that they're struggling with. And I'd also say too that um another program that I didn't talk about, um which there's just so much um to share about the work that we're doing. But one of them is uh helping people who are coming out of the prisons as an institution and be connected. Because um that's a real gap is when somebody is being released from somewhere like Coffee Creek or Deer Ridge. Um they have to go back where their crime was committed, not where uh maybe their family was. And they might be going back to a situation where it's challenging or they're like, they, you know, look at, you back in with, you know, with with a crowd where that, where they, where they, they could burn the risk of recidivating or or reoffending. Uh and so we are doing services um now in the prison and then giving them a work handoff to somebody as they're exiting. Uh but there's still so much, there's so much bureaucracy and issues with that. So it's, it's helping to navigate a, a, a system that doesn't work for people. And so the more we learn about how people are struggling with it, even with those supports, we can help to advocate the change. And I think that's also the power of being able to um get and and think about workforce services um uh more broadly than a training and education program. Uh and so that we can think about like, if we remove this barrier, then they'll be more um uh able to go to that training program. And so some really cool stuff that's happening now um around the world of the entry uh that uh is just coming online now.
Do we, sorry, do we have any literature that we give out like on days that people have before, when it's like, hey, there's a clinic coming up in this? Like if I, or do we, do we know, does staff know about it? When it's, are you still walking in and asking, oh, I hear what I go for, so I think it's.
I, I look at Scott, but I don't believe so. But it's definitely something he can look into, you know, happen.
I mean, our court isn't a criminal court, so it's.
No, but but Jimmy, just like, you know, anybody who walks through that court, maybe then walk, they may ask them a question. It's just cause you have a ticket, doesn't mean you don't have a felony or misdemeanor, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, and usually like me, if I'm just getting out or if I've been in, I just walked here, I probably go to City Hall before I go to the court house to ask them those services.
Yeah.
But if there's a bad issue that.
Or a library.
Or library, even in the.
We've been, oh, library, just, oh, I would, I would love our WorkSource Center to look in. I would like a library. You just, anybody could just go in and say like, I need this. And our social services should be a first thought of that. Like that's my dream. Um but uh for expungements, no, there was something I was gonna say and I feel like I misplaced it. Um. Uh. Oh, uh down in San Diego, um they launched a program, uh it it's called, I think it's called Homeless Court. Hmm, that doesn't sound right. Um but but it's a, it's a program that people who um have restitution, instead of expecting them to uh volunteer to pay down those fines, um they were connecting people, they're connecting people with the workforce system and having them learn new skills and train and get work experiences. And those hours are counting toward that restitution so that it's not, it it it's not them giving up time that they really don't have, that they need to be working. Um and so we've been trying to launch a commu- a community court. We've been trying to launch a community court uh locally. Uh and I know they're gonna be piloting something in Oregon City. Uh the judge there is really excited about connecting the dots for people um into job training programs. And so um they, they're funded now through HS, like through the um uh supportive housing services um to to help connect people who are coming through their court system with misdemeanors and um and restitution to our system. So I, like if there's something that the city could do um to expand that beyond Oregon City, that would be really exciting. We'd love it to be coming wide. We just need the, the DA to warm up to the idea.
Um, we should've scheduled you for an hour on that at the beginning. Um I, before we go though, um before we let you go, um I wanted to turn back to the employer side of things. I mean, I first talked to you about childcare interests, you know, several months ago. Because I, we heard, um so like, let's just take International Way over here as an example. Um we recently had a, one of the heads of, one of the bigger employers there talk. And he told us how he has like twenty-five openings and he's having trouble. Uh I thought, oh, it's childcare. Actually, in his case, he does, doesn't think it's childcare. He thinks it's more uh access, it's more not a service, not transportation services at the right hours. And um and I do hope we can, you know, get China to, uh to do some surveying in that area and see if maybe we can get support for more of a service. But um I guess just picking an industrial area like that, like how would you engage or how, what kind of services would you have for those employers? Or how would you bring them together to have the conversation around, whether it's childcare, transportation, whether it's apprenticeship programs, whatever?
Yes, we would, um uh we do what's called sector strategies. So it's pulling industry partners together um to identify what is, what's, what are issues that is critical to them, not a super imposing saying like, we think that this is a problem that you need to solve. They identify the issues. So we have sector strategies for manufacturing, uh construction, healthcare, behavioral healthcare, uh early care and education. And uh we did for technology, although we've backed off of technology, cause technology, like those that are pure technology companies, they really don't need us, cause they're just looking for like senior software engineers, which our system isn't necessarily um able to provide them. Uh but because technology is ubiquitous, we're still invest, investing in like IT and cybersecurity supports. Uh but the idea is that bringing those industry partners together and figuring out what they have a like. Uh as far as what, what does growth look like for them and where are they willing to work with one another? And really letting them guide the plan and uh guide the process. Um and so a lot of International Way has manufacturing um that we would uh love to have uh a greater engagement in the manufacturing work. Um we launched a next-gen sector partnership for manufacturing this last year. And what that does is it's not just workforce issues that we're asking them to identify. We're saying, we're gonna center your voice and you can come up with any issues. It could be supply chain. It could be, you need a flight from Phoenix here that's direct at two o'clock in the morning and it's just not being provided. It could be something that's related to something a city could do. And what we are doing is more organizing all of the public partners and investments and saying like, how do we listen in and then create um create opportuni- or create some of those programs alongside of the business community. Uh so I think that's, get, like, we want them engaged in our sector strategy work. Um I'd also see some of it is like location specific. So to your point, yes, I also think transportation is an issue over there. Uh so I don't think they're wrong. And I think that there's also a childcare issue that um they're probably not recognizing or talking to the community about. Um but that's neither here nor there. But in a, in a uh community like that or a geography like that, convening those, all of those industry partners and saying, what's, what do they wanna share? So that might look different than a sector strategy. That's just, that's a geographic strategy, um which I think could be really powerful. Esticade actually just hosted something uh last month where they brought in their employee, uh uh many of their employers and talked. And we, you know, we did presentations about what's going on at the college, what's going on at the uh, at the high school and with our K-12 partners, what's going on in the world workforce, what's going on in economic development. And just really created a space so that they could learn what's available in the community. Cause so often they're so busy, they don't know that all of these resources exist for them too. Um and uh and so if there are businesses in Milwaukee that uh are looking for, if they have retention issues or or recruitment issues, um we'd love to connect with them. So um certainly make a referral and we can help to wrap around that as well.
Okay. Just refer them, uh an employer directly to you.
Yeah, yeah. And then we'll, we'll get them either connected to our s- uh our larger sector strategy work or we'll work with them to see what does coordinated services look like. We have, uh we can mobilize a whole team of partners uh so that they don't have to call each and every partner. We can help to coordinate that to make sure that uh if they're looking for youth interns, if they're looking for uh new workers, if they're looking for sp- s- specific cohort training, if they need a new pathway developed, if they're having a hard time around bigger city and inclusion and leadership, it could be whatever. And so um they, the, the more we understand, the more we can engage partners to help solve those issues.
Yeah, I suspect we, yeah, we need to think about outreach so that.
Yeah, sure. And I, and we'd love to work with you on, on that. So if you wanted to do something, post an event, we are actually gonna be um uh uh hosting, uh we're piloting a, a workforce summit in September. And we're just in the process of planning uh the uh the content for that. There's so much to share, good work that's happening around the county that we want employers and other partners and electives to be aware of. Um but there's also work that's happening outside of our community that we'll also wanna share. Um and really this summit, we wanna, um we know we're, we're in the midst of a shift. Things are changing and we wanna be able to change together and collaborate differently in the community. And so we're hoping that the summit is uh is a kind of a, let's refresh what partnership could look like here. There's already some really cool work that's happening. Let's build on that. We're not starting from scratch. So um would love to see you all there um to engage yourself with that work too.
Keep us posted on that.
Will do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Um so with that, we have the council reports left. If any have the council report, again.
Yeah. So the um Water Consortium met last week. Probably the most uh interesting thing that happened is that there was a um an official from the National Water Works Association who um who gave a presentation. Uh and it was uh really mostly about the PFAS. And uh we've heard a lot of that from uh Peter already. But it's really, it's a really a big deal nationwide about challenges uh that a lot of cities uh are, are you know, have to think it's investments and they're really not have a plan for that kind of thing. And so um, you know, there's a, there is a, you know, enforcement alert by the EPA, which basically uh says that all the states have to have a plan by June twenty-eighth. This is just around the corner. So the states have to have a plan uh for their own sort of enforcement regimes to be in place uh summer. Uh and that, and so it's kind of getting real serious and the EPA is actually gonna have a final drinking water standard that's gonna come out um soon and uh it'll be a deadline for legal challenges. So that's gonna be a process to play out, you know, legal challenges that are that possibly uh some industries or some government entities may challenge those uh rules. Uh but the final rule is out and so uh you know, it's kind of a big deal. Um they mentioned that there's uh two years remaining on the Infrastructure Act. Uh there's some money out there, it's been highlighted before. Uh so people are, you know, they're basically, you know, everyone the heck's up. You got a program that you think uh might meet some of those criterias, you need to get them in. And um uh there, there's a big, big emphasis on cybersecurity again with smaller water districts. Uh because it's getting, not getting to be um a big deal there. And um so they have some, the Water Works Association has some recent, especially about smaller ones. There were some outstanding issues about election, members of the, of the board chair and vice chair. You know, some carryover of funds and that kind of thing. Um but um we uh we signed the intergovernmental agreement with the, with the uh Water Gen Consortium that went in uh last week. So, so we're all caught up on the bottom.
Okay, with you? Anybody else?
You know, that, I mean, last week, I'll go and get some of the disinformation.
Yes, no, we're done. The C four night, C four week, I'm actually gonna, you're going on Friday? Oh, we have the council dinner. We have the CCA dinner on Thursday night, yeah.
Everyone's gonna be there?
And then, pardon?
Everyone, everyone in this room is gonna be here? Yes.
Yes, wait, what?
Here.
Yes.
Time's a story.
And I had a count of forty, maybe I never.
Forty and three. Uh but no, the host bar starts at six. Dinner servers start at six forty-five and then the presentation starts at eighteen, wrap up at eighteen fifteen.
Upstairs, so for the trigger. Um.
So Claire, were you saying that you were planning to go to C four?
I am planning, I just, I had a deal with Trent this afternoon and I'm planning for Friday afternoon. Right.
I can't be there on Friday.
Oh, you can't?
It's commencement night, apparently. So, it's at two forty-five and uh.
Oh.
Got a.
Oh, can I say that? Oh, rock. Oh, really? Oh, wow. I didn't know that was a thing. No.
Okay, I didn't know. Or I would not have served my attendance. So if you would like to stay the evening, um cause I'm planning to just drive up Saturday morning. Um I have a room.
Oh, no.
If you're in need to. Anybody else want to stay?
I gotta go upstairs.
Yeah, it's Friday, so.
One P M. Um it goes until about four thirty-ish, I think.
And do they do a group dinner with that?
There is a dinner, yeah, at six thirty. Um it's not, you know, mandatory, uh some folks peel off and go elsewhere.
Did, but they go just be for that a long time.
For the dinner.
Of course.
I'm showing your cards.
My idea, my idea is that I should do the day, but I can't.
Well, we can, you guys can sort that out. Um I will be there in the afternoon. I'll probably phone us in. But um anyway, I also just wanted to take a couple minutes to recognize Shane, cause it's his last meeting. Um and I looked and looked when he, when Shane. Um and I looked and what, when he, when Shane's elected term. Uh Scott, I think, was instrumental in getting T-shirts that he said important with.
We didn't find our time to make ones that say shall.
I couldn't find mine, I was. There were all the dark T-shirts and I could not find it, I couldn't remember what color it was, but.
Gray, dark gray.
Gray?
That gray, white letter.
Okay.
Yours is probably, it's probably in the vintage shop, because I don't remember.
Well, I have like eighteen Milwaukee Farmer's Market T-shirts and about five Sunday Park Boys T-shirts, but anyway. Um it's been great having you with us for this interim period and um you really bring a thoughtful eye to things and. Ask great questions and, you know, it's always, it's always been nice to serve with you, so I'm glad you set forward to do this interim gig. With us and uh.
Yeah, thanks.
And I I want me to just say a couple words, that first of all, staff is amazing, you're really lucky, I've worked for a lot of cities. And not only is this council amazing and collegial and thoughtful and, I mean, passionate and all of it, but you you have an amazing staff and I give a lot of credit to Jan for that and then. Department heads, it just still goes on down, you hire good people, they hire good people. Um all my interactions with staff are just so hardworking, I I want, I'm a please tell everyone that, that it's just, it's great. Um it's been a real pleasure, I had fun the first go around and this one was just as fun and in some some ways, more fun because I didn't have committees I have to record. My own level of work, but I.
Like being a wrench.
Yeah, it was. Now I had one school at the first over in the C four, so. So you guys are just, you're so, you're really amazing and I'm, cities in good hands and I have really thoroughly enjoyed it, I'm sorry that I ran off your city manager and chief. We'll have to get him this one a little, see, I think.
Don't expect to get invited back.
Yeah. I'm sure Will will do a fantastic job, but thank you so much, it really has been a lot of fun and I, it's uh reinvigorating me a little bit. Um I would say that too, so thank you very much.
Well, Shane, I just wanted to, on behalf of the staff, it's just been a pleasure, um I got to meet you very briefly back in those climate, climate action plan days and then I saw you again last year, it was like my third week of work at Pride and I was like, oh. Wish I could have been here at the same time as Shane and then I got my wish, so um it's just been a real pleasure, uh we got you a little plan, a token of of staff's appreciation for how you helped us grow. Uh we learned a lot about plain language, we'll try to keep you on that ground, uh to kind of, you and the diets, but uh, yeah, it's just a a real pleasure and we're also so thrilled that we are such a dedicated and amazing community member, um. So now you can show up and testify.
It's been fun to see uh some of the things that we started, I think the urban renewal district started that, we did see that now coming to fruition, it's awesome and. I mean, we did a lot of things and then uh and to see them institutionalized, like the Climate Action Plan and all of that, it's just. It's it was kind of interesting to come back after a six year hiatus, but I you know, I still follow the city, but not to be so, that evolved.
Yeah.
And it's just great to see things move forward, some things haven't moved forward as much as I hoped, Milwaukee Bay looks the same as it did, I think, I'd love six years to go and. But like that, but um but it's just the city is really moving forward and it's progressive and. Thank you, thank you for the fire.
Done, I represent all staff.
A lot of, I'm a lot of.
Good plan, yeah.
In addition to the plan, the all festival ice cream celebratory and ice cream.
Oh, I guess, yeah, I'm gonna actually handle this shit, so.
You have.
That's not, I'm right, well, you know, these are nice, I saw it, we were at this thing, it's like I, I stopped up on the basic cells and my.
That's right, they asked me what's what you would like and I said, he doesn't eat very many sweets.
It's what I'm saying. You know, Shane, you should have said that in your interview, because I wouldn't have voted for you.
At the end, a little.
Yeah.
Well, I'm surprised, because yeah, he he does have a bit of an ice cream now, so. Well, you're in for a treat, right, as we all are. Is that okay?
I'll take it.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll be right.
I'm gonna appreciate it during the.
Oh, yes, we are.